Max Perry, Watkins County. Over the last year and a half, we've attended lots of water meetings. Planning unit meetings, joint board meetings, Wyro One management team meetings, staff meetings, and WIT meetings. The planning unit is the only one of all the groups that include ordinary county citizens who use water. And it's the only one, the only group which has standing as it was created by the Washington State Legislature in 1998 and the Watershed Planning Act, RCW 90.82. This morning, listening to all the committee meetings, I was a little bit disturbed when it was alluded by some people that should know better perhaps if they attended the meetings, but they haven't, I don't think, that the planning unit is inefficient. So I'd like to compare the planning unit perhaps with the joint board. So the planning units had seven meetings. They brought to you today from Perry Eskridge, brought a budget. They were asking for $20,000 for the next few meetings on it. And they've met seven months, and they've come up with a draft water plan that they presented to you today. So this is what the planning unit has done in seven meetings, and even with the effort of someone on the planning unit that tried to keep it derailed or to keep it ineffective, but it's progressed even so. So let's compare it with the joint board. They've been meeting since January 2013, the latest one anyway, and they pay their asking 40,000, or they're paying their facilitator $40,000, which according to Councilman Mann, that would be $3,000 to $4,000 per hour, because their meetings are about an hour and a half. And what have they brought to you as a council, or what have they brought out of their joint board? I can't think of anything that they've brought forward.
Thirty seconds, please.
So I think the planning unit is your best bet. It's your best bang for a buck, and I just ask you to consider that $20,000 to keep them going. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree. Water action plan, I've told you before, I think it's too much, too soon, and you'll get too little. Too many things, too many people, too little result. If you really want to be serious, and I've said this before again, the only thing serious to me is you guys figuring out a way to get us all agree on how much water is out there, and then get us to agree on how much should stay in the rivers. Those two questions, if answered, will solve all the other problems. The last one was the presentation today on the Lake Wacum reconvenance option. I understand Mr. McFarlane wanting to pay for the reconvenance. That was a commitment that was made when we did this. The presentation was about how to pay for maintenance for the rest of this year rollover, which was about $99,000. That moved from a $100,000 payment to a $1.5 million transfer. Wow, how did that happen? Facts, as I understand them, the conservative futures fund is for the purchase of conservation properties. $1.5 million was loaned from this fund to purchase park properties and was returned to the conservation futures, per this organization. Logic in my mind says if it came out of that fund and goes back in that fund, that's what it's supposed to be used for. My conclusions, if you already have more money than is necessary to complete the task that the public was requested to fund, then you need to sunset the tax. The conservative future funds has over $5 million, as stated today, and Councilmember Crawford stated that this is way more money than we're able to use to purchase properties. So if you're going to spend this money on something else, then you probably should think about giving it back to the people who wanted it spent on properties. And if you're not going to do that, then you should at least give them the opportunity to vote on what you're going to spend it on, because we voted for where this money was supposed to go. Thank you. Sunset it and re-vote it.
Thank you.
Diamond Nikon, Birch Bay. Basically, I've emailed most of you over the last week or two and had a few meetings with some of you, basically on the text amendment to the zoning ordinance for, which adds a paragraph, basically, and a couple of other exemptions, to the resort commercial district. The resort end label is about 11 properties, which is could affect, in the Birch Bay area. The intent of this is basically to get something formal and on the docket or of record so that as someone develops their properties, they will provide for a automobile link or traffic link on their property across it, so at one point in time in the future, we could develop a promenade. So basically, one thing, too, is I requested to have it docketed. Hopefully, you can reconsider that and have it docketed either at this meeting or your next. Okay?
Thank you.
Karen Brown, Watkins County. I would urge you to support the request that was made this morning for funding for the planning unit. I could go into all kinds of things, but I think you've got an awful lot of knowledge. You've got, if you pass Mr. Weimer's water bill, I don't know what else to call it. Carl, you use the planning unit for at least three-quarters of the things that you have listed on there. Enough said on that one. I would also urge you to support the $40,000 request that is rolled up in AB 214, excuse me, 2014-114. If you cannot pass the request for the $9 million plus, please pull it out and pass it by itself. And then I would also...
What is it?
The $40,000 requested.
For what?
For the lawyers.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And I would also please ask you to keep the moratorium on the marijuana, which is AB 2014-074B, until we understand and have a full, I mean, Ferndale has said not in our city limits. I think London has too. I'm not in favor of it, but I'd certainly like to have it. More information, I think it needs, we're opening a giant can of worms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Altman, Watkins County. First of all, I wanted to encourage you to please be sure to support your planning unit. They are the legal body that you, as a lead agency, can depend on to have all the stakeholders' opinion. I think it's the least obstructive way to actually hopefully get to a resolution. I don't think any way that you go about that you're going to have a perfect road to peace when it comes to water rights, but it's important, and with the planning unit, at least everybody gets their say, the stakeholders in it. I wanted to address the $1.5 million that came from the Conservation Futures Fund that was borrowed for Lily Point and then didn't get back there, then got back there, and now apparently it looks like you're looking at borrowing it or using it again. Within the email that was sent to you, Barbara, it said, I just spoke with the auditor's office, he said their legal counsel's opinion was that the $1.5 million of funds that came from the state back into the Conservation Futures Fund does not carry the same restrictions as the Conservation Futures Fund, but it does carry whatever restrictions were in the state grant that they came from, so I will try, so anyway. What I found, and I believe this is the correct one, is that it came from the National Coastal Wetland Conservation Grants, so I'm just going to briefly read what's within that. And it says, "The National Coastal Wetlands Conservation Grant Program was established by Title III of PL 101-646 Coastal Wetlands Planning, Protection, and Restoration Act of 1990. The service provides matching grants to states for acquisition, conservation, or restoration of coastal wetlands. The service supports projects that are consistent with the National Wetlands Priority Conservation Plan, benefit threatened and endangered species, and migratory birds, promote partnerships, and support conservation and recovery programs. In the Pacific region of the USFWS, the following states receive grants through the National Coastal Wetlands Conservation Grant Program." I don't see where that is a parks maintenance fund, so just telling you that, you know, that it could be problematic, that you need to use the money for what the grant at least specified the funds are supposed to be for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tom Armstrong from Sideways Green. We're in the business of being able to produce marijuana legally through the Washington State. We're, I live in Acme. I've been there for 20 years. I have paperwork tonight that I brought with me because before the first moratorium was put on here in Watkins County, we believed from this paperwork, and it'll be paperwork you guys will have to look at, but you'll see what I mean. I've invested a lot of time, a lot of money, because from the paperwork I was given, I'm seeing that right now I should have been in before that moratorium. And now, because of the moratorium, they're holding us up. We're held up, everybody's held up. But I believe that our paperwork was actually there before the first moratorium. Paperwork's all stamped, January 29th. The moratorium came on the 11th of February. So my thought is, we're already caught up in this first moratorium. I'm sure hoping that with all the money that everybody has put out, the place was picked out, the place was okayed, the money's been put out. So without, with this 300-foot setback, that completely kills everything in a place that was already said was okayed by the county, by the state. So now I'm kind of wondering where all this information comes from. I'm just like, you know, why? You know? It is a legal business, and I know that people right now, the big fear is that it's going to bring crime to these areas, but these areas aren't going to see any more crime. These places are going to be 24/7 watched by security cameras, security equipment. There's not going to be a lot of anything going on. There won't be money in any of these places, there won't be money in any of these places for them to want to steal. There'll be product there, but again, very high security. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tanya Burdick, and I own a business, Medical Marijuana Collective, within Bellingham, unincorporated, but still in Bellingham. And we're a 502 applicant, and I am wanting to speak to you about your rural industrial manufacturing. I am located within the Cascade Business Complex, 5373 Guide Meridian, and we are rural industrial manufacturing. According to everything that you guys have, you're asking for all of us to be producing at least 50% of the marijuana produced in Watkins County? That is unrealistic. According to your guys' Chapter 2069, point, what is that, 053 agricultural type uses, point number 11. It's on page seven of the information from you guys. But there is no way that I can produce 50% of the marijuana within the county. There are actually six 502 businesses that are applying to be within that Cascade Business Park. I don't see how you can ask all six of us to each produce 50%. That doesn't make any sense mathematically to me, and I don't...
Yeah.
It's 50% of your product has to come from Watkins County. You don't have to produce 50% of the product produced in Watkins County.
No, just that, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, this is not very clear. It says that the provider of the facility produces at least 50% of the marijuana produced in Watkins County. So it's, it's not something that is written clearly.
That was not the intent.
I know it's not, but I just want to bring it to your guys' attention that it needs to be fixed. It needs to really be gone through with a fine-tooth comb. We want to do our part, and we want to take up this new adventure, but it's unrealistic with something like that. And if there's any way that we can possibly move it any faster, we would love to get started. We've been paying rent since November for a business that I can't even start until you guys lift this moratorium, and it's killing me, paying for something I can't do anything with because I can't build, I can't do anything. So if there's any way that we can move this forward, we're happy to answer any and all questions and help you guys through this, and we're happy to be a resource for you. So with that said, thank you.
Sorry, could you just point us to the point, to where you think the error is?
Page seven, point number 11 at the very top.
Page 24 of our packet.
Yeah, and it's just stated weird.
I'm sorry, which?
Point number 11, where it says, "Uses related to agricultural..."
Oh, it's on page 23 of our packet, right in the middle.
Are you done with the joke?
I mean, I would love to, but I can't do that within 3,000 square feet. That's not practical.
Yeah, you're right. We need to work on that.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
We're looking at this too much, we're going to see.
Good evening, council members. My name is Doljeet Nagaram with Mount Baker Blueberry Farm and American Cannabis Grower LLC. I've been an entrepreneur for the last 15 years. I came from India, worked as a dishwasher, and left and as an area manager working for Denny's. Started doing business on my own, building homes, about 30 homes in Watkins County. The recession made me drive truck in 2008. I currently own about 10 trucks and do about $2 million in sales. I thought this 502 was moving in the right direction. I love farming. I enjoy farming. Farming brings families together and makes the little children see their fathers work hard. They want to help me in the blueberry farm when I work there. When the 502 initiative came, first I was against it because I don't want my family to know what I, I don't want to grow cannabis, but economically, it's going to make sense for the county, for the state, and for United States of America. This will change everything, believe me. I'm sitting here 10 years down the road, you will all agree that this is moving in the right direction. Our president, first president, had to grow hemp. At one time, United States of America asked for all farmers to grow hemp at one time. It is a very important part of, it is, it is, if we do the research. I've worked very hard to put the application together and convinced my family that this is what I want to do. A bunch of my friends told me because of my good record, I may qualify. Well, in the winter, when there was very winds, chills outside in January, I worked hard with my hands, digging ditches, shovels, getting ready for this. Made an application. I was halfway through the application when the moratorium come. Now, I manage 30 employees in main time. I took very, very, very precious time from my family and my other business, where I did not make nothing, and invested into this business, made my application, and now we're at, we can't do nothing. This has caused very, very bad hardship on not just my family, on a lot of other families. Everyone looks at cannabis like it's drug, it's a farming now. Let's move, let's not kick the can down the road no more. Can we please have you guys reconsider this moratorium?
Thirty seconds, please.
And maybe lift and help the families that are going through hardship. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Henry Bearlink Farm Friends, old segue between agriculture, our newest crop, and water. And I do want to say a few things about water, and I understand that we created a little stir about just positioning, our position on water, on the planning unit, and it's not meant to discredit anybody's work on the planning unit because we value everybody there, and being there is a lot of good people that have a lot of good experience that belong in a planning, water planning unit. But we do have some concerns. I think as we laid out in front of you, and they, I was encouraged by your debate this morning and this afternoon, that you guys are wrestling with some of those same concerns. You know, how do you, what is the relationship of the county to this planning unit? And how do you put money into something that you don't really have any control over or any duty to really listen to? That's the way, I don't really see how the, how this works, the way some people report it to. I think it worked to produce a plan, we were part of that, and I think it produced a good plan. But to move towards implementation, which is where our body is at, where all of our people are at, is to implement that plan, is, the planning unit doesn't seem to be very capable of that. Can it be supportive of that? Does it have to be a county advisory board? Maybe not. Maybe it can stay as a planning unit, but the county has to have some ownership and some authority and some, some interaction with it, a relationship with it, so that it can actually go somewhere. We don't want to spend a lot of time in planning exclusively, that doesn't really have a place to land, and that's the way we perceive it at this point. And I think it does also, you had some questions earlier this morning about whether or not that planning unit is that fully functional, where we know the environmental caucus is not there, the Fishers Caucus is really not there, they've had Steve Seymour sat through one meeting, I believe, kind of reluctantly, just for the Fishers, but nobody is really there. Dyking and Drainage Caucus has never been there. Many other caucuses have been kind of in and out of that process. I don't think that it's part of, it's been really hard to get people to get too engaged with it because people don't know where it's going, and where it really comes out of it, how will that then be implemented? So until you really wrestle with those things, I think that you've got to be careful about putting more money into it. Now, I think we, the points I would like to make is that we'd like to fund, see you fund the planning unit, but it's conditionally that you have to determine as to how you're going to do that.
Thirty seconds, please.
I think you make some good steps in that you are looking about having monthly reports to your planning board, which I think will be very wise. That helps move that along. Encouraged by the potential relationship to the water action plan that you guys are going to talk about later, and those are, those are some of the things that we see that are potentially ways to make this thing useful, so that the work there is honored and valued and used. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin Dexter, 3726 Broad Street, Bellingham. Henry and I made a career of testifying on the opposite sides of bills for many years, so it's a pleasure to agree with almost everything he said. I've been a member of the environmental caucus since the 2514 was passed in 1999, and I'm here to speak in favor of Carl's action plan because it has action in it, but also, the environmental caucus, as you may or may not know, is not a part of the Wyro process right now because the Wyro as constituted now does not rise to the intentions of the Planning Act 2514, mainly because of all the missing caucuses. So if you're going to go ahead and give $20,000 to the Wyro process, I'm not going to speak against that, but I think this council should be very, very clear about what your expectations are and what your outcomes are going to be. The things outlined in the action plan are great, we've needed them since 1999, nothing ever happens. If you go forward with it, it's going to be a lot more than $20,000 bucks. So take your time, be prepared to spend. Look how difficult it was to spend the money at Lake Sammish today. Magnify that by a hundredfold. I'm in favor of that. I don't care how much tax I have to pay, but make it clear what your intentions are. The people in the Wyro have no idea what your expectations are for them. We're not there, I don't speak for the environmental caucus, but we watch, we listen, they have no idea what you really want from them. So, and they cannot function on their own. So you give them the $20,000, tell them why, tell them what you expect. If they're just going to rise to the level of an advisory committee to the council, that's fine with me, but be clear what we're doing. We're going to spend millions and millions and millions of dollars dealing with our water problems, and I'm in favor of that. It's about time we get to that. But make sure you have a path and you can tell us what you want. And I promise that the environmental caucus will respond to the action plan if you pass it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ellen Baker, Glacier, also Wacum Water District Caucus of the Planning Unit. It's impossible to listen to Henry and others and not respond. Watkins County Council made it very clear when it adopted 99050, a resolution more than 10 years ago, what its expectations were. It recognized the Watershed Planning Act for what it was and wanted something good to come of it. Last year, the council reiterated its concern and confirmation for what the Watershed Planning Act itself says. I support Carl Weimer's efforts. I think that's a very good idea for there to be a watershed plan. You go to the shelf and no one knows the condition of the watershed. There's chaos, people don't know what the problems really are, problem, problem, problem. Spending money and not achieving solutions. This is why we need a good watershed plan based on sound information. We need public involvement, not secret meetings, not small groups competing. It's the perfect place to achieve the goal of the Watershed Planning Act, which this county is operating under. So the $20,000 is next to nothing compared to the $5 million that's run through, funds 670 with little to show. It is important for us to plan. I support planning, Carl. I support the ideas that others bring to the table. We shouldn't be at each other's throats, and it bothers me to think that people would be throwing stones when this process is, a very wholesome process is headed, is moving forward. There is no question what Watkins County's role is. It's lead agency. It's very clear in the law. The planning unit is responsible to communicate with the Department of Ecology. The state agencies are supposed to be a support to the planning unit. It is our planning unit. It's the planning unit that serves...
Thirty seconds, please.
...Watkins County and the council in the planning role. So I don't see any conflict or any downside to getting this thing going, moving ahead as it should. And I appreciate what Robin just said, but I also know that Marion Vidal was here today, and he fully supports the planning unit in concept and the openness, inclusiveness of that process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perry Eskridge, I promised I wasn't going to say anything until I heard Henry stand up here. You know, it's really rich coming from him. The first meeting I ever attended of the planning unit, I was treated to a presentation of Henry Bearlink's various projects in the Wyro One. And I was sitting next to the ecology person, and I looked over at her at one point and I said, "My God, how much did this cost, all these projects?" She turns to me and she literally says, "Millions. We have spent millions on these projects." I said, "Oh, that's, okay, these look like the projects. Where's the results?" Do you know what her response was? She shrugs her shoulders. She doesn't know. Henry Bearlink stands up here and says the planning unit needs more accountability? That's brilliant. You know, in the last joint... You know, in the last joint board meeting, I remember I was sitting there watching their facilitator. The county staff is sitting there. The city is sitting there with their two staff members. The tribe have all of their staff members there. And I'll be damned if we can get one staff member from the county to help us out. And yet we're down here begging for $20,000 when there have been millions spent to help us get through the next six meetings so we can get on an even keel. And one of the things you ask us to deal with is that consensus requirement. Well, here's the deal. The meeting, when we were talking about this budget, Mr. Beurling opposed it, wasn't really excited about it, but he said he'd go along with it anyway. At the last meeting, when we voted to reaffirm that I would come up here and ask for that money, the agricultural caucus, their alternate representative was sitting there at the table, just two people from me, and he says, "The agricultural caucus fully supports this." And now, what were all the emails that I talked to you about this morning that come in and tell me that now there's an issue? They're from the agricultural caucus. They're from Henry. That's what we're dealing with on this situation. And, you know, I, I am all for Mr. Wymer's statement that we need to change our voting requirements, but it's to avoid the issues that are being brought up by a couple of members that have had this thing, you know, doomed from the start and refused to work on it. They got theirs, now to hell with the rest of you.
Thank you.
I'm Chita Strimmler. I want to thank you first off, for all of you, for responding to our concerns in Clearbrook and for protecting our little community there. And I just really hope that you will use wise leadership for the whole community in making some wise decisions. And I guess I realize that you have been misled on a lot of the facts in the very beginning. And I realized, watching the news and so forth, that Colorado, when they put theirs in, from my understanding on the news anyway, is that they just allowed the medicinal ones to be in place and then they let them sell it recreational. And I, I think that they did it slow. And I, I feel bad for you because you're kind of trying to pick up the pieces after the fact and put rules into the place after the liquor control board says one thing and, and then the Attorney General and so forth. So I guess I just feel like it's not too late to make these decisions. And they're not decisions that are just going to affect a few people, a few growers. They're decisions that are going to affect a lot of people in our whole county. I've had different people from Acme and other places that have called me and asked me about it. And I think the other thing is, people don't even know, they don't look on these maps. They don't know they're in their backyard. Sometimes when somebody comes into your neighborhood or they're going to build something, they have to let all the neighbors know and get permission and so forth. But people are shocked when I say, "Hey, you ought to check the map out. Maybe there's one in your backyard." So I think that there's a lot of people that you don't hear from because they don't know they're in their backyard. And I just, I really hope that you will use good common sense and I appreciate the stand that you've taken so far. And it makes good sense. There's some guidelines there and that's what we need is some guidelines. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address this at open session? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the open session and we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Mr. Crawford.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, the County Council Finance Administrative Services Committee considered the consent agenda items one through seven today, voted to recommend approval three to zero on all seven items, and I would so move.
All right, we have a motion for the consent agenda. Anybody want to pull anything? Seeing nothing, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes unanimously. We are on to items from Natural Resources. Mr. Buchanan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had, excuse me?
Water Action Plan.
We had a resolution declaring the council's intent to create a water action plan spelling out various water quality, quantity, and habitat issues to address in the 2015-2016 budget discussions. The committee recommended two to one to the council to approve this, and I would so move.
All right, there's a motion in front of us to approve the action plan. Is there any discussion about that? Ms. Brenner.
Just real quick, I want to thank Gary for incorporating my comments in it, and I did appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Mann.
I just want to thank Councilmember Wymer for his leadership on putting this together, and I look forward to voting for this.
Mr. Crawford.
You know, for more than a month now, I've been bringing up my concerns about what's the cost here. And I've said that in the media as well as to staff, as well as to you all and the public. And I'm going to make a confession here, in that time I've been waving that flag, not one person in the public or anywhere else has, has said, "Yeah, that is of concern." Now, I'm not saying that people aren't concerned out there, but I want to be, I think Councilmember Krimmon used the term team player earlier tonight.
Oh, God, I knew it.
And I, I think in an effort to try to show the council's resolve on this, I'm going to change my position and vote in support. It doesn't alleviate, that's conditional, of course. It doesn't alleviate my concerns, but I want to move this forward. And I, the straw that broke the camel's back for me today was when I reread the title in the agenda that said, "Spelling out the various water quality, quantity, and habitat issues to address in the 2015-2016 budget discussions." And I think that's an appropriate place to put my concerns, and I'll certainly be bringing them up at that time.
Well, if you're going to support it, I'm going to
Yeah, really.
You didn't change your mind, Carl?
Mr. Brown.
So should I vote against it then? Or? No, I, I just wanted to take a point of, again, also thanking you, Councilman Wymer, for the leadership on this. I think this is probably the single most critical issue confronting this county long term.
Well, I appreciate the comments. I, I'm going to vote for it too.
What is it, Brown?
And just because there's been lots of talk, and we've talked about water issues all day today, and this is something where we're trying to tie those together. And we certainly hope the planning unit will be part of those discussions, along with all the other groups that are working hard on these issues already. I've met with two of the shellfish protection districts this week, and the farmers and the shellfish producers and the citizens are all on board with moving forward on stuff. So I, I hope this ties it together. Just so other, everybody understands, this isn't to create a new plan. This is to give the council enough information that we can prioritize stuff and hopefully fund the low hanging fruit so we can make some actions this, this year during our budget discussion. So, appreciate it. Mr. Brown.
I just want to add one other thing. There's a report out from the National Intelligence Council, which is the governing, sorry, the central body that provides long-range planning for the US government, Department of Defense, CIA, et cetera. They list resource conflicts as the most likely source of conflicts over the next 25 years. They list water as the most likely cause of those resource conflicts. So that's an issue, just to accentuate how important this issue is.
And we've seen conflicts already
We've seen conflicts already.
In water here in the county. All right, any other discussion? It's a resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Buchanan, you want to deal with the WIRE funding now?
Yes. The committee approved the recommendation to, to the full council and to the Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors to approve an additional $20,000 in funding to continue planning unit efforts for six months to finalize the work plan and develop an operating process within the group to make decisions more quickly. And I would so move.
Mr. Crawford.
And in addition to that, I would note, we clarified this would come from the flood fund. Which is why it goes to the Board of Supervisors.
So this, we're acting as the Board of Supervisors, and the motion is to approve $20,000 for continuing facilitation of the planning unit. Any other discussion? Ms. Brenner.
I've got another motion coming from Public Works Committee that was unanimous, related to this, but let's vote on it. It's support, it actually is supportive of all this.
All right, well, I'm not going to support it, and I'll speak to that right now. And it's not because I don't support the planning unit. I'm hoping they'll be an active participant in the Water Action Plan. I'm hoping we really need a multi-stakeholder group with, to give us a voice from all those stakeholders. But as a member of the planning unit for years and, and seeing how long and slow they operate, after hearing today that the initiating governments who formed the joint board, the city, both tribes, Wacom County, and the PUD, wouldn't agree to fund this at this point. Department of Ecology, sounds like they wouldn't agree to fund it. Number of the caucuses aren't participating because they see the inefficiency, the way the planning unit is working. I totally want the planning unit to work, but I don't know why we would spend, give the, of the 40 advisory committees we have in this community, none of the other ones get money for facilitation. I think we have a couple of staff people that can facilitate the planning unit to at least change their operating procedures so they can move forward on issues instead of endlessly talking about issues. And as soon as they change their operating procedures to do that, I will embrace giving them money to continue forward. So I'm going to vote against it at this point. If they want to come back two weeks from now and say they've changed their operating procedures, I'm down with it. Mr. Brown.
I would echo. I'd also like, first of all, I, I certainly support the efforts. I think what's come out clear tonight is the planning unit needs better guidance from us, and that's our responsibility to provide that guidance. But I would also like to see both a change in the procedures and better representation from the different caucuses.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, commenting on what you just said, it's been the joint board members that have tried over and over again to derail the planning unit. It happened when there was the total disrespect to begin with, when there was a request from the planning unit for some nominal funding that went to the joint board and they refused it, before the planning unit had even gotten started. Then they brought it to us and we were so irritated with the joint board about it, we sent it back to them, and then they did it. I mean, it's been totally disrespectful from the joint board. That's one thing. And some of those caucuses, or whatever you want to call them, that did, that was there, if they aren't going to do it, it's kind of like saying, "Oh, we can derail this just by not showing up." And then they'll say, "It's not working." There's a lot of caucuses there. There's a lot of different diverse entities there. And I appreciate what you're saying about, you know, not using funding in the future for, you know, for paid consultants and stuff. That's what I want to work to. But we can't do that until we, you know, make a push to get them to change their procedures. It's kind of like we're going around in a circle and they're the victims here. I'm sick of it. I'm going to support it for sure.
Mr. Mann.
I absolutely support the planning unit, and I want the planning unit to succeed. I am very, not but, calm down, Mr. Brown. I am very glad to see Mr. Eskridge on the committee and making this proposal. I have a lot of confidence in him and his knowledge. I am going to support the $20,000, and I look forward to, I, I agree that we need to do better as a county council, giving you guidance. I, I do feel like we had given some guidance with a work, request for a work plan and the budget. And I, I also believe this Water Action Plan we just approved is also going to inform what issues we want to see the planning unit work on. But I think as a stakeholder group, it's an awesome, diverse collection of stakeholders. I think it's very difficult to get those, some of those stakeholders to have productive meetings, and I think that may be why we need a facilitator. But I don't want to see that continue in perpetuity.
I agree.
I, I just, I really want to see the planning unit succeed. I think we have to have a, a functioning planning unit making recommendations and helping us with these sticky issues.
Mr. Krimmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I pointed out earlier today, the wide array and large number of residents, inhabitants of Wacom County, represented in the planning unit, deserve at least a, enough money to continue to try to get their voices heard, even though they're not unanimous and there there's a, a wide spectrum of, of beliefs and ideologies. But it really is the only forum for the county, the county government, to be even in any position to adequately represent the people we are elected to represent on the joint board. You know, I, I really am becoming a little, I guess the word would be perturbed at the, at the initiating governments because you talk about exercises in futility. I, I was a member of that, that joint board for a long time. And we really, except for maybe the first couple of years, where we actually did get some things accomplished, has languished much more than the, the much maligned planning unit. And I, I do take exception to the fact that the, the joint board collectively can't come up with $20,000 or even half of that sum to, to give support to a very important part of the water planning WIRE process. So I, I'm going to, I am going to support the expenditure of the $20,000. I mean, obviously, if I had my brothers, it would be a staff member doing it for much less. But, you know, being what the cost is today for, for facilitators, you know, we, we really don't have any other alternative. So, because the executive doesn't want to have a staff member provide that function. So I'm going to support the $20,000. I think it's, it's money well spent, and it will at least give us an opportunity to field and solicit and provide for the opportunity for the vast majority of, of Wacom County residents not represented on the board, the, the joint board, to weigh in on this all-important issue.
Executive Laus.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I was listening to the conversation here today, and of course, this morning I proposed that we do fund the $20,000 and that we also suggest to the planning unit that they look at their operating procedures and within the confines of the state law that they make changes that will make, make their committee a bit more productive than what I believe it is at this point. I think that if that's done, we'll have the opportunity to get other caucus members involved and engaged back into the process. The facilitator is going to handle, is it this month's meeting yet, Gary? Is going to be handling this month's meeting. And I'm committed, I'm going to commit to staff handling the first meeting in April so that we can keep the continuity of the meetings going. For us to meet this budget cycle, it will be, this $20,000 would be introduced on April 8th, and it would come up for adoption April, I think it's 14 days beyond that, so whatever that happens to be, the last meeting in April. But that would give us the continuity. It would also give the planning unit then the time to continue their work and possibly even report back to us before you would have a opportunity to vote directly on the $20,000 acquisition of funds. So I make that commitment, and we'll keep it, we'll keep it going. As I've said, I believe that the planning unit is a good place for us to go. I do agree, and with, with a lot of what Henry has, has said, and he's been somewhat misaligned on that, but, but the truth of the matter is, is that I want the planning unit to work for the future on what we're going on. And I don't want to spend a lot of money and a lot of time going over the past because right at this particular time, we do have a lower NICSEC plan put together and we're in the implementation, implementation stage of that. But we do need to augment our data, and I'm looking forward to working with the planning unit to get that done. So I, I could, I could provide a stack of emails, as you guys have seen, that probably supports every one of the every one of the different ideas that are out here. Some people think the planning unit should be dissolved. I've got people that need, that think that it needs to stay as it is. I think there's people that think that it need to be modified. There's a whole varied numbers of opinions out there. But I think that this gives us the opportunity to allow them to be successful, but it burdens them with the fact that they need to be. And so I would encourage support of the $20,000 with the realization that you're going to have final vote on that late April. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, I'm just going to mention this, I'll bring it for a vote in a few minutes when it's committee reports, but it dovetails just on what he said. We discussed, we were talking about the joint board, we discussed in committee a motion to bring to the full council, and it passed unanimously in committee. It's to recommend to the full council to make a recommendation to the planning unit to use a system of majority rule and to allow the planning unit to produce a minority report in addition to the majority position. And that's exactly what Executive Laus was just, was just talking about.
Mr. Brown.
So I could support this with a friendly amendment, if that's the appropriate language. And that would be, and this goes back to the issue of providing the planning unit with some clearer guidance, clear out guidance. And that would be, one, to change the procedures to be more productive. Two is to enlist 90% of the total caucuses to participate. And three, demonstrate how members represent the caucus constituents. And that would be done, that would be a work product to be produced by the time the money, by the time the money runs out.
Mr. Kremmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With all due respect, Councilmember Brown, I can't support your amendment, largely because your requirement for 90% participation gives an opportunity for 10% of the caucuses, which is probably only maybe two caucuses, can just by not participating, pretty much foil and render null and void the planning unit. And so therefore, I just think that that is, is just something I can't support. So I, you know, I...
So I would accept a lower number if someone can, if there's a consensus as to what the consensus number needs to be.
Ms. Brenner.
I would support your first one and your last one, but not the middle and the same one. I don't want to put, it is so not fair to put that kind of thing on them, when you, anytime, I mean, it's been disgusting to watch people make the kind of inflammatory comments about the planning unit and, you know, not show up, or, it's just not right. I think if we, if we change the procedure and we let them keep moving, people will come on board or they'll get left. And that's the problem, is there's no, there's no, you know, problems for the people who don't, who don't become involved because they're just trying to shut it down anyway. I'm not, I can't support the middle one. But if you do the other two, I'll support them.
We're lost here, yeah.
We wasn't talking about the $20,000 or the...
Right.
No.
Barry made the motion, and I don't know if you were trying to do that as a friendly amendment or if that was an amendment to the motion to add those...
Friendly.
It was a friendly.
Friendly amendment.
Out of scope for a friendly amendment, I believe.
Okay, well, then I propose as an amendment. And if I can just respond to Councilmember Kremmon, what I'm trying to do there is to make sure that the planning unit has some meat to it in terms of the value of the product it produces. And if it doesn't have enough representation of the caucuses it's supposed to represent, at some, at some point, it becomes irrelevant. And maybe 90% is too high, 10% is obviously too low. I don't know what the magic number is. But again, going back to the earlier comment of one of the speakers, is to give them clear guidance as to, as to what they need to do to be relevant, to be able to produce something of value.
I think, I'm going to ask for a little clarity here, because I think we're a little confused even in our process, because I think the people that supported this thought we were approving $20,000 this evening. And what the executives made clear is that he needs to bring us back a correct budget resolution for the Flood Control Zone District. So what we've passed tonight so far is a motion, I guess, just asking the executive to do that.
And he's committed to it.
So I think the motion in front of us is a motion to ask the executive to bring us the resolution to actually obligate the money.
Let me clarify, that is correct. And we also, the motion also does address develop an operating process within the group to make decisions more quickly. And that could be if Councilmember Brenner wants a motion, a subsequent motion after this motion, to clarify that, so be it.
Okay.
And I think out of respect to the planning unit and the autonomy that they have, that I think that we should leave it at that, predominantly at that, that we ask them to take a look at their operating procedures and have them come up with what they believe may be a better way of going about it. Obviously, under state law, there's some things that they aren't going to be able to do, but there's a lot they do. And to start specifying, being very specific within that, I don't believe is productive at this time. But I think the point has been well-taken and well-spoken today is, is that we have an expectation that we can make it, we can take care of some of these things a lot more efficiently than what we've been going on. So I would appreciate the motion to stay as it is, out of respect to the planning unit, give them the opportunity to work on it. Come back to us and let them tell us what successes they've had with that. So, thank you.
And as a former planning unit member, I would support that language, because I remember one of the tickly issues within the planning unit is that we set our own operating procedures. And I think us trying to dictate to them, once we've already given them the ability to set their own procedures, is not correct. So I think it's more, they've heard the discussion today, it's mentioned in the motion that we hope they will change their operating procedures. Seems like their handwriting is pretty clear from us. Can you read it again, Barry?
Yes, the motion that the committee is recommending is to the full council and the Flood Control District Board of Supervisors is to approve an additional $20,000 in funding to continue planning unit efforts for six months to finalize the work plan and develop an operating process within the group to make decisions more quickly.
But now we need to add the request the executive to bring forward a supplemental for that amount. Is that correct?
Well, that's sort of part of the motion.
Well, they should start out with that.
I'm going to assume by the approval of that motion that, that I will bring that forward in the form of a budget supplemental to formalize it. And I think that that's something that we're working together with.
Mr. Kremmon.
Just a quick question, thank you, Mr. Chair. What kind of timeframe are you looking at in terms of being able to bring that supplemental to us? It would be two, four, six, eight weeks?
On-site, on-cycle, it would be introduced, the first meeting in April for approval, the second meeting in April. And that's why I'm saying that I'm committing staff to running the April, the April, we'll facilitate the April planning unit meeting so that they can keep on continuity and keep working.
Thank you, Mr. Executive. I really appreciate your cooperation, your assistance.
Ms. Brenner.
Why couldn't we introduce it at the next meeting and have it be passed two weeks after that? Why do we have to wait till April?
It's a cycle.
We can do it anytime, though.
We actually can do it anytime. It's not, it's not a huge deal. I was just going to bundle it up, bundle it up with everything else that we do.
Sounds like the meetings are covered. Mr. Brown.
It, it gives the planning unit two more meetings to accomplish some of their goals prior to the final decision being made. And I know that that's a concern of Councilmember Wymer's. I'm hopeful and confident that the planning unit will move forward enough that we'll get a seven-zero vote in favor of the motion in April. It'll all work out.
So is the council committed for the next meeting, without it?
The, the facilitator is going to handle the March meeting.
Okay.
I'm going to have staff handle the April meeting.
Okay, all right.
And we'll have it put in place so that we can continue then in May.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
It's a bargain, they're getting seven meetings for the price of six.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on the motion? Mr. Brown.
Well, I just, I just also want to make clear that, I want to acknowledge the people who are on the planning unit are volunteers, and I genuinely appreciate the time they're devoting to this. What I'm trying, what I want to see happen is to make sure that whatever work product they produce is deemed by, by everybody else to be representative of the community so it has, it has credibility, and that the product can be produced in a timely fashion and they don't get crippled by the existing process. So I don't, I hope nothing I've said is in any way treated as disrespectful to the efforts of those volunteers, because that's not my intention.
And just so no one's surprised, I'm going to vote in favor of this.
Yes.
Not because I've changed my mind on anything I said, but because the planning unit has two more meetings before we actually vote to approve this money.
Team player.
Let's do it.
Team player, that's the motto of the evening.
All right, so any other session? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously after beating it to death.
Stop from the jaws of the sea here, we grabbed it.
All right, on to Finance and Administrative Services.